I am muted, I have a separate control, don't worry about it, I switch myself on and off.
Okay. Okay, just don't say enough at MPO if you can't mute.
I can confirm, Madam Secretary, that we are now live on YouTube.
It's that one?
Yeah.
Oh yeah.
Okay. Are we ready? Yeah. We ready to go Jude, with seven o'clock are we? Okay, good evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the first Somerton Town Council's first Zoom meeting. We are live streaming, so this is something new for us and I hope it goes smoothly. I'd just like to say also tonight that this will bring to the end delegated powers and we're going back now into full council, in full council meeting and committees, so just thought that you know that. Can I ask all members, as you all know, to stay muted unless you wish to speak? If you need to speak, please raise your hand on the digital device, but if you can't, then just put your hand up like this and we'll get to you. I am on iPads, I've only got nine squares in front of me, so please excuse me, I'm not trying to be, and my Jude will have to help me because she's got a much bigger screen. I just thought I'd let you know the running order, I'm going to change the running order of the agenda slightly and I'm going to bring item 185, 1485 forward and do 185, 1484 afterwards, so I just thought I'd let you know that. That would be the co-option coming forward and then we'll talk about the policy afterwards. Okay, I'm aware we have two members to speak tonight and I will take Andy Foin first in a minute and then I will take Mr Richardson second. You have three minutes to ask your question, if we can't answer your question, I will ask, we will put it in writing to you. Okay, so we're going to go forward now on the agenda. The first item on the agenda will be public question time and Andy, would you like to come forward on your question please? Or I know what you're going to talk about Kirkham Street, but okay. You're on mute Andy. Andy, you're on mute. Do you want me? Do you want me to go to Peter first then?
I do apologise.
That's fine Andy.
It's not of course me, it's Margaret, the chairman of the group and I'll pass over to Margaret to do the three minute presentation, which I think we've agreed, you very kindly agreed.
That's fine.
Pass over to Margaret. So here you are, best of luck and apologies for that slight glitch at the start.
Good evening councillors, nice to see you again. As Chairperson of the Trust, I'm here to ask the council for help. Already the granting of match funding for Kirkham Street Field shows that the council supports this community-led initiative. Thank you. However, since the submission of our application, funds amounting to £32,000 have been promised, bringing our total to £55,000. The input of £50,000 from STC would give major benefactors more confidence to donate and would enable the trust to approach the district council for funding, which we have tentatively investigated. The trust found other funding streams available for development and maintenance. Your help at this time will address the very current difficulties in fundraising called by Covid. Kirkham Field will meet an identified shortfall of three acres of informal open green space in Somerton, whilst complementing the sports facilities provided at Gasol's Lane. Supporting this project generously would be a fair distribution of council funds for leisure facilities for the town's residents of all ages, genders and abilities. The idea of green spaces for general wellbeing of communities is now rising to the top of the national agenda and when Kirkham Field becomes vacant in 2021, Somerton will have the most incredible opportunity to be forward looking by using this green space to address social issues, heal the community after Covid, create habitats of wildlife, provide an outdoor space for the residents of central properties, both old and new, with little or no garden, including Wessex House. A space for social prescribing for GPs for both mental and physical health and provide opportunities for volunteering and more. It will create an area of peace and quiet near to the bustling High Street with its pubs and eating venues, enhancing any visit to Somerton. Expressions of partnership have come from Dementia Care, the Men's Shed Movement, ASAS, RSPB, Somerton Wildlife Trust. But first, the land itself has to be saved. While the council itself, keeping Kirkham Field as a green space, will address carbon reduction and storage and provide space to plant trees. In contrast, the development of properties on this field will destroy the benefits which I have just listed forever and set Somerton back a generation. The purpose of the trust is to save Kirkham Street Field. Please support us as much as you possibly can in our final effort. I am submitting a proposal, which I have already shown to Martin and Dean, to amend the trigger clause in the recommendation to councillors, so that it reads, "To release the funds on request, once the sale agreement has been secured with the county council and presented to Somerton Town Council for verification." Thank you, Margaret Chambers.
Well done, right on time Margaret, thank you very much, thank you, very good Margaret. Can you mute now, is that possible please?
Yes.
Are there any questions to Margaret please? Okay, no, no questions. Okay, can I, no question, sorry, I can only see nine of you, sorry. Can I, can I, no, sorry.
Sheila was asking for a question Chair.
Sheila, yeah, sorry Sheila. Sheila?
Yes, yes, sorry, I had to unmute, it takes a while. And Margaret, can I, can I ask what the impact would be of, of funding below the level that you're asking for in terms of your, your projections for fundraising with other bodies?
Do you mean the £50,000 or the £25,000, which is the recommendation at the moment?
What, I suppose what I'm, your initial, initially you were asking for between 50 and, and 150.
Yes, indeed.
If, if less than 50 were offered, then what would the impact be in terms of the, the levels of confidence for other fundraisers that you would be dealing with?
Well, I mean naturally, without a doubt, that would knock the confidence a little bit because in my simple mind, 50 plus 50 is 100, to have 100,000 to tell people about would be a great boost. And as I said, £32,000 has come in through letter and talking to people on the phone in the last two to three weeks. And, and therefore I can, I can only say, if I'd been able to say, we have 75,000 or 100,000, that would have been extremely helpful and given people confidence. So the more we can have, obviously, the better, but we understand the situation in the town council.
Thank you Margaret. Phil, can you go, yeah, thank you, Phil, do you want to speak?
Yes, very briefly, I just wanted to ask Margaret, has there been any progress whatsoever in any background, in any shape or form, about potential archaeology, archaeology on the site? As you and I have spoken many times, I have got a great belief there is something very important on that land. Have you, have you and your group done any more to it? Could you update us on what you know?
No Phil, the group has not done anything, we are fairly busy in going out to individuals. And although, as you and I agree, there could potentially be something, there's odd bits of evidence, like an aerial photograph we have, where we've seen structures underneath. But I, I know you have suggested to me a particular company which would look into that for us, but we haven't, you know, we haven't thought we should spend funds on that at the moment.
Okay, thank you, can I go to Fiona now please?
This is a question for Jude. The resident's letter that's come in to be read out either at standing orders or question time, re-resident referenced the grant for Kirkham Street Field, is that going to be read out now?
We, we can do, yes, we've got a couple I think, haven't we? Jude, you're muted, sorry love.
Sorry, they're all on emails, give me a second, sorry, I completely forgot.
Fiona, can you go back muted please?
I will, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry everyone. Okay, so I'm just going to read them in order that they were received, if that's okay. So this was from Tim Goldwyn. Dear Sir, we support the Kirkham Street Community Trust in their efforts to keep this field as an open space for the town and urge the town council to do the same with a substantial financial contribution. Next one was from Jill and John England. Along with the other concerned residents of Somerton, we have provided financial support to the Kirkham Street Community Trust, sorry Kirkham Street Field Community Trust, to preserve this field as a town green space and an outdoor community hub. As greater funds are needed, we hope that our town council will agree to provide substantial support to help purchase the historic space at the heart of Somerton before it is lost forever. Next one was from Mr Clive Wilson. First, I would like to say that I, along with other councillors, voted unanimously to make the initial grant of £500 to enable the Kirkham Street Field Support Group to get underway and I appreciate the hard work that everyone has done. The guidance for Somerton Town Council annual grant budget is a total spend of approximately £9,000, but as always, there are always special circumstances. However, the request tonight by Kirkham Street Field Trust is for a grant of up to £150,000. I feel is, I feel is excessive and equates to approximately a third of the council's precept for which any small town council is a large chunk of money. Reading tonight's agenda with the recommendation for this grant application to the value of £25,000 seems a very fair, seems very fair to me. A £25,000 grant is a great deal of money and although Somerton Town Council has supported the Kirkham Street Field Trust, it is not leading or driving the trust. I would hate to think the Kirkham Street Field Trust believes Somerton Town Council is obligated in some way to support them forever and a day and eventually the trust must be self-supporting. However, as councillors, you must be very mindful that a president will be sat tonight, whatever the total of money granted to Kirkham Street Field Trust, and I am sure it will be a considerable amount. Other trusts and groups in Somerton will be asking, no demanding, and the same amount of money possible for major improvements to their facility and all of them thinking Somerton Town Council is sat on a pot of gold. So that was from Mr Wilson. From Robert and Elaine Griffiths. Dear Chairman, we strongly support the Kirkham Street Field Trust in its endeavours to purchase this era, area, sorry. Historically, this land has been used for many parts of the community for various recreations. Should it be sold for development, this green area, the only one in the town centre, will be lost forever. There are sound plans for how it could be of benefit to the community for all ages, for recreation, social meetings and relaxation. The need of people for green and open spaces has become ample demonstrated when we have seen during the Covid-19 pandemic, how people all over the country have flocked to parks and the countryside as soon as it has been allowed. So for the sake of the children, the elderly, those keen for outdoor exercise, the lonely, those who will enjoy nature butterflies, birds, trees and flowers, please be generous in granting funding to help the trust reach its funding target, thank you. Just need to check if there is any more. No, I think that's all of the correspondence, thank you.
One last question Phil.
Very quickly, I read one that came in asking that social housing should be put on there, so I don't know where that letter's gone, but there was a person who wanted social housing to be built on the area. I'm yea, you're nay-ing it, but there was another letter.
I think you're right actually.
Yeah, let me find it, I'm sorry, it was a JPG in one of Dean's emails. Sorry. In the position of Head of Estates for Somerton County Council, you are accurately aware, shorted of low cost and social housing within the local area, especially Somerton. Somerton has recently had many new houses built within the town, however, there are very few that are low cost or for rent. I note you are possibly selling the Kirkham Street Field, a prime building site and well below the price of the Kirkham Street Field Trust. At a time when Somerset County Council needs all the funds they can muster in this austere times, would it not be prudent and financially viable to build low cost or social housing on this site as Somerset County Council already has ownership of the land? It would yield a healthy yearly income for Somerset County Council over future years. Sorry, it's very small. Failing Somerset County Councils wish not to build or have responsibility for the field, why not maximise this asset by selling to a housing developer? I'm sure they will give top dollar for this prime building land. Selling this land at well below the cost, albeit for a charitable trust, does not seem to be the best possible interest for the council taxpayer. The need for cheaper housing in Somerton is fundamentally more important than another recreation ground with play equipment for which the latest Kirkham Street Trust plans show. It is no longer the quiet space as it was originally proposed when you received their original request to purchase. I raised in Somers, sorry, I was raised in Somerton, now with a young family and I would love to move back to Somerton. However, there is nothing I can afford, hence my preference and request for low cost housing. And that was from Lesley Haywood.
And that was addressed to Charlie Fields, your estate manager of Somerset.
That's right, sorry, yes, to Mr Fields, thank you.
Okay, if that's, if that's fine, we've heard what you've had to say Margaret and we'll take that on board when we get to your grant requests. Are you happy with that Margaret? Yeah. Yeah, okay, I go now to, I go now to Peter Richardson please. Again, three minutes Peter please.
Yep, certainly, thank you. Mr Chairman, Madam Clerk and assembled councillors, good evening. We've referenced the proposed policy on co-option on tonight's agenda. I've researched the Local Government Act 1972 and NALC's guidance 15-08 on co-option policy. Firstly, the co-option of a councillor is an act governed by law and therefore a council's policy must be lawful. The law under the Local Government Act 1972 states that, "After 14 days of an election calling notice has lapsed, co-option of a councillor", and this was in capitals, "must take place as soon as practically possible." In STC's councillor co-option framework document at 1.3, it states, "At least four weeks will be given for the applicants to seek more information and to apply. This arguably is not as soon as possible." This framework document, which has not been voted in as policy yet, has been incorrectly used since 2017, has not, and has not been fully followed. The short video introduction to becoming a councillor, as stated in 1.4 of the document, has never been available on the council website and is currently still not available. NALC's guidance 15-08 states that, "The co-option of a councillor will be done by a vote in full council, either by a show of hands or by ballot, secret ballot." STC's current draft policy of vetting prospective councillors via an HR panel of chosen councillors is unlawful. It is so because at 2.3 of the framework document, it states that, "A review by councillors present will be undertaken after all the interviews have taken place. Candidates that have sufficient support to be proposed and seconded will be considered at the next full council." Therefore, the interview team would decide who is a suitable candidate for the next stage. This is undemocratic and unlawful. This vetting lacks transparency and is also open to conscious and unconscious bias by a small select interview panel. The decisions of this select group, by vetting the candidates and the subsequent decision made as to which candidates may go forward to a full council vote, could be judged as discrimination against those who are not selected. The conscious and unconscious bias of the vetting team, based on a person's background, race, religion and gender, would leave the council open to legal challenge. For example, should I apply for co-option? I know there would be a conscious bias by some councillors on the interview panel who have openly and publicly declared their dislike for me and would discard my application without further thought. I have checked over 30 different parish councils who have published their co-option policy online. All follow NALC's guidance, which is, when a member of the public puts themselves forward for co-option, they are asked to complete and return a form that checks their eligibility. There are four reasons why a member of the public cannot stand and these are published in the Local Government Act 1972. They also suggest a questionnaire is given to the prospective candidate to complete, that enables the full council to judge the candidate's experience, though this is not mandatory. Once this is done, at the first suitable date of the next full council, the prospective councillors either attend and have three minutes to present themselves and to answer any questions from the councillors present or the candidate can write a letter stating their suitability, which is read out to all. Should the gathered councillors wish to discuss a prospective councillor, they are to do so in close council without the public present. This process is fair, transparent and controls discrimination and should promote diversity. A vote is then carried out in full council with the public present in the normal manner. On the subject of diversity, I noticed that in STC's council, there are 15 members, of which there are only currently four female councillors. Surely, if a suitable lady candidate was to apply to be co-opted, which I believe is currently the case, the councillor should make every effort to ensure the candidate is eligible, send out the questionnaire if applicable and vote on co-option as soon as possible and not to delay for a further eight weeks, especially as the current candidate expressed her interest over five weeks ago. Therefore, Mr Chairman, Madam Clerk and assembled councillors, I suggest the proposed STC co-option policy is deferred until suitable policy is agreed by all councillors and voted on in full council. In the meantime, the standard lawful practice under NALC's guidance should remain extant. Mr Chairman, Madam Clerk and assembled councillors, thank you for hearing my views on the subject.
Yeah, thank you Peter, I let you go over a little bit there, thank you. Fiona please. Fiona, you're on mute. Fiona, you're on mute. You need to demute Fiona.
I think your phone Phil was before me.
Oh sorry Phil.
Yes, I'd just like to say that for those that follow councillor Q and A, this very subject has been running for the best part of four days and I can confer what Peter has said, that those within the industry of town councillor and also clerk come down to the fact that having a subcommittee in any shape or form to interview a potential member of a town council is in its basic form undemocratic. Why are we selecting people to sit on the council? If someone is available to sit on the council, wants to sit on the council, has shown that all the legal tenant has been done, they should be invited to be co-opted. I've been the other end of this, so that's why I've got an interest. And I think if we have one candidate, one position, when we come to the position later on, I think we should co-opt that person immediately.
Thank, thank you very much Phil, I've got the message. I just want to ask Peter something, Peter, that was, I've read that as a statement, not a question, you don't want me to answer, you don't want us to write to you, do you? What we're doing.
No, that was, that was a comment, not a, not a question, I'm just.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, I just want to make that clear, sorry, Fiona please.
I realise a lot of information has been fed out there and it's a lot to take in and I do realise as one of the four females on this council, it would be, I think, beneficial to have another female on there.
Thank you, thank you. I'm going to move, I'm going to move on now, there's no one else wishes to speak. Mo, did you want to speak, do you want to speak Mo? Mo, you're on mute.
Yeah, Dean, have a hand. Have a hand up.
Oh, sorry Sheila, sorry, Mo's, Mo's shouting at me but I can't hear, I'm sorry.
I'm speaking now, I'm live now, am I?
I'll come back to you Sheila, that's okay.
Okay. I am a woman and I've lived very much in a full mixed world in my professional career and I would never want to be appointed to make equal numbers up. I'm afraid everyone should be looked at on their merits, not on whether they're a woman or a man. I very much disagree with that statement, okay? I mean, if a lady is very suitable, then fine, but we shouldn't give anyone priority because they are male or female. I object to that strongly and I am a female, okay?
Take that on board, no, good, good question, can you go mute again though, sorry, I'm going to go to Sheila then.
I'm just going to.
Thank you, thank you very much, Sheila, sorry, I can't see you, sorry Sheila.
No, that's fine, can I ask, can I ask Peter a couple of questions?
Of course you can, yeah.
Peter, that, there's an awful lot of work that's gone into that and thank you, thank you for that, it must have taken up a lot of your time. Can I ask you the question, do you believe that the process that we use, assuming that at the moment we don't have a policy in place, that the process is as at fault in the way that the potential policy you believe is in fault?
I believe that the current framework that you have in place, that isn't a policy and that has been followed since 2017, is at fault. Effectively, NALC's guidance doesn't mention anything about pre-vetting people. It does say, however, as I said in my last paragraph, that they are checked for eligibility. A questionnaire can be sent out if required, but that decision on the suitability of who will be a councillor goes to full council, it's not pre-vetted.
Right, then can I, can I ask you another question and this, this is, I suppose, a judgment question more than it's about fact. Would you, from what you've read, the process of co-opting somebody, if you have never met the candidate and know nothing about them, would that appear to be a reasonable thing to do or an unreasonable thing to do?
No, I'm sorry, the, the process is there, they come to full council, they have three minutes in which to present themselves, they've already been given a questionnaire, if that's what you would wish to do, all councillors have that questionnaire and the answers to it. And therefore, they give their three minutes and then they are open to the full council to ask them questions, to assess whether or not the council feels, when they vote, that these people are suitable.
And from.
Sorry, one more Sheila please, sorry.
Sorry, and from what you're saying Peter, I'm assuming that your, that your belief is that we should go back to the drawing board in terms of putting together a policy to present to full council?
I believe that you should follow the NALC advice and, and the same process that the vast majority, if not all, parish councils currently follow.
Thank you, is that all right Sheila, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Phil, last one please.
Okay, be very brief, Mr Chairman. When there is an election, there is no vetting of any candidates, they put their, their business proposals out to the community and they get voted on. I don't see that there should be any selection process whatsoever in someone being co-opted. I think if someone's available, we should allow them to come on in.
Thank you very much, I've spent half an hour on public, I'm going to move on now, sorry, if that's okay with you, I'm going to move on. I've got county and district councillors report, Tim, have you got anything to report please? You're muted Tim.
Yeah, District has been rather occupied at the moment with the unitary debate, it seems to be pretty much everything that, that we're doing. Had a meeting today of Somerset Waste, there's been a lot of work going on behind the scenes in bringing up what had become a fairly deficient service because of the pressures of Covid. Bringing that up to speed, quite pleased to see that a lot of the missed collections should now all be dealt with. So, sort of getting back to a little bit of business as usual with, with the curve ball of having to deal with unitary. So I think that probably summarises it.
Thank you Tim, yeah, I would, I would concur, Somerset, One Somerset, as I like to say, has taken up an awful lot of, a lot of my time on Zoom and Edge and all the meetings I'm dealing with. There is a push towards One Somerset, however, the district councils will be putting their own plan together to come up with a different scenario, whatever that scenario will be at the time. So that is very much all that's happening at the moment. I will let you know as well that with sadness, my. I will let you know as well that with sadness, my weekly reports will come to an end on Friday. However, I'm looking into seeing whether I can give you a monthly report of what's going on. That'll be a lot more complicated, so we're working on that, see whether we can do that for you. Just let you know on the district front as well, we've had some really bad news. We're going to lose several of our planning officers. We have lost Simon Fox, our lead planning officer, and several other officers will be going. So I don't expect to see much, I would say a bit of backlog happening, should I say, while we recruit and get some more planning officers in. It seems to be what's happening at the moment. People seem to be moving around quite a bit. So just to be aware of that when you see an application hasn't been dealt with or we get an applicant come to one of our planning meetings and says, well, you know, what's going on here? Because it's going to be a bit of a problem. Other than that, I've got nothing else to say. So we'll move on. That's okay. Other public services, I don't think we've got anything from the police or fire. Report from council representatives of external bodies, I would be very surprised if we got anything there. Martin, have you got anything on the library? It says it there, so you're happy with what's written on there, Martin? Okay, fine. Reports from chairs on council committees, have we got anything? Fiona, I thought you'd put your hand up, Fiona. Anything, Fiona, please?
I've got a few things.
Oh, don't be long Fiona, I need to move on.
Somerton in Bloom, as you might have seen in the town, we've had thirty-eight baskets which have been erected. There is a few discrepancies. There should be eight half poles that have gone up. We are minus one on the finger post in the market square. And we should have had two troughs in the market square, one by the parish rooms, one underneath the information board. They are missing. I've actually contacted Sharon Hansford, Andy Franklin and Steve Fox to find out what's going on. I'm still awaiting an email. But the other thing is, they should have gone up. They should have gone up way, way ago, unfortunately, on the tenth of June. They've only just gone up now. The watering system, which we had in place, which was for fourteen weeks, three times a week, would have finished on the twenty-first of September. I'm hoping now, on the email I've sent them, to extend it down to the nineteenth of October, which would be the fourteen-week period. I'm still awaiting the email, so hoping they'll come back on that. Secondly, we have had a reply back from the house at the bottom of Horse Mill Lane with the second letter that Jude actually put in. And they are actually going to cut the Budleia back, so the view for the cars on the T-junction will be clear. And we are still monitoring the dog fowling in certain areas with chalk paint on the ground. That's all.
Yeah, thank you very much. The baskets do look nice and it's a great effort, so very well done there. Is there anybody else who wants to say anything about anything? Jude, sorry. Jude, yep. You're muted Jude. Oh, yeah, okay.
Sorry. Fee, when I put the agenda up on the notice board by the parish rooms, I think the two troughs might be there. They're quite large, almost the size of the planters. Is that what you were expecting?
They weren't supposed to be put there. One was supposed to go on the gable end where the notice board's been removed.
Yeah.
One was supposed to go by the church railings, by the notice board, by Parmesanels.
Yeah, I understand. They may be in the wrong, but I think it's worth checking. I can go this evening, but I think they are by the front door of the parish rooms.
Okay.
I will have a look. I know obviously there's the two concrete planters by the doors. I saw them, but I didn't see anyone.
They're in the gap, or they were when I saw them on Thursday when I put up the agenda.
Okay, just check guys.
I'll just see if you can check, because obviously I only looked where they're supposed to have been.
Okay, well done. Thank you. Policies for absence, please.
Sorry, Dean. Councillor Ray Bolden and Councillor Holland.
Okay, thank you very much. Any declarations of interest? Nope, fine. Exclusions of the press and public, yes, we have an item. Oh, sorry Jude, sorry, carry on. And Mo? Oh, sorry, Kirkham Street.
I'm really sorry to interrupt. Sorry, Mo. But Phil, would you like to go back to reports from council representatives on external bodies? Because you had a PPG report, I believe.
Yes, I did, but I won't go through it because we're pushed for time. I'm sure your good self will put it in the minutes for the next time, so it can be read. Okay? And the other thing with Speedwatch is it's only just started, as Peter and I both know. And I will put together a paper for our next meeting, so that you can have an update on where we are with Speedwatch. I don't want to take up any more time because we are going on. But we've had the reports in and hopefully they'll be on the minutes next. There's nothing that needs immediate attention with regard to PPG.
Okay, if you're happy then with the action, sorry Dean, I'll distribute your report through the email system to councillors.
Can I just say declarations of interest? I am a trustee of Kirkham Street.
Yeah.
Trust.
Thank you, Mo. Thank you, Mo. As you know, you can always jump in at any time, tell us if you've got an interest, because we all tend to forget at some points. Exclusions of the press and public. Yes, we have an item for in camera. Can I have a proposal, please, that we go in camera? Please, Fiona and seconded by Tim, and are we all in favour of that, please? It looks like we are. It's unanimous. Well done. I'm scrolling the screen here, so you'll have to excuse me. Minutes in the previous meetings, you've all read the minutes in the previous meetings, the meeting, it was quite a long time ago now.
March.
I hope you, are you all happy with those minutes?
Can I propose we accept those minutes, Mr Chair?
Thank you, Phil. Seconded by Peter. Peter Simmons, are we all in favour of that, please? I think that's fine. Yeah, that's great. Okay, thank you very much. And now I'm going to go on to, because I've changed it, I'm going to go on to co-opting a new councillor. Have anybody, yes, Phil, can I?
Yes, I'd like to go straight in and propose Anouska Harrison as our co-opted councillor. As she's shown interest and she is the only candidate for the position. We have two others coming up later on, but let's try and fill Anouska in now. And I'll give her two months to get used to how the council runs and she can do all the extra bits and pieces that I had to do as a new councillor. So I'd like to propose that Anuka Harrison, sorry if I pronounced her name wrong, is co-opted on to the Somerton Town Council.
Have we got a second there, Fiona? Sorry, it's Fiona.
I would like to second that in the interest of fairness and diversity.
Okay. Is there any other who wants to say anything, please? Sorry, Mo. Mo, yeah, Mo and Sheila.
Yeah, I would like to see something in writing from the lady, because I don't know her. I don't know anything about her. I would just like to see something before I would, you know, vote and agree, okay? I feel that we are being asked to say yes blind, really, okay?
Okay, Mo, I've got that. Thank you. Mo, can you mute? I've got Sheila now, please, Sheila. And I'll come to you soon, sorry.
Right, I've got a number of issues, but I won't spend too long on them. Firstly, I think we're in a muddle with our policy. I take on board everything that Peter Richardson said, and I thank him for the work that he's done on that. But if our policy is so far off beam, I think we need to review it. And I don't think we should continue with a process that is deemed not to be compliant with what other councils and what the NALC guidance is. That having been said, if we are looking at co-opting this evening, part of what Mr Richardson said, if I'm right, was that we should have a questionnaire with a co-option thereafter. We've had no questionnaire, we've seen nothing. I certainly know nothing about Mrs Harrison. You know, I'm not doubting her efficacy as a councillor. What I'm saying is that I would prefer to know something about somebody if I'm being asked to co-opt. But I do think that we need to go back and review the policies before we do anything about co-option. Thank you.
Unfortunately, I've got to propose a second on the thing, so I can take questions. But we will have to vote on that in a minute. Sorry, who have I got? I've got Sue first and I'll come to Tim, please. Sue, please. Sue, are you still there?
Sorry. Yes, I really appreciate what Peter Richardson set out, actually. It's been really helpful, because I've been looking and thinking about this a lot. And again, I haven't got any issues about Mrs Harrison. I just think, as Sheila said, if we need to go back and revisit the policy, should we not do that first and should we not follow a particular policy, if it's the NALC policy, which would involve what Peter Richardson was saying, which was having, you know, a presentation at the meeting, et cetera, et cetera. I don't understand why we turned the things around, Dean. In a way, I'm a bit confused, because I would have thought
I'll tell you why I turned things around, because you can't have a retrospective policy before you go to a co-option. You can have, that is the fact. So that in itself is not right. So I've turned it around to co-opt first and then you can adopt a policy afterwards. It's not fair to, just because you want to retrospect, you cannot do that. And even if we had approved the policy, I still believe it would have been retrospective and we would have probably gone to the co-option. There is a standard Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two, which we can't, there's not a right and wrong here. Can I explain? There's not a right and wrong. There is a government act. We are allowed to co-opt. We have someone who wants to co-opt. So we're doing nothing wrong. If you want to have a policy after the fact, you can do it. And the new members, any new members come on, you will have that policy in place. But I think that is how I see it. That's fairness, but that's fine.
I get what you're saying, just think that we discussed it at tag and we agreed that policy. We're revisiting it now, I get that. But that's what we agreed at tag and now we're, so that's the point I'm making. That's just the point.
Yeah, okay. Tag's obviously not a decision-making. So, sorry, Tim, please.
Yeah, I agree there do seem to be some issues with this policy. I think we do need to revisit it. However, I see a glaring problem is that this application was put in in good faith with the system that we have. You can't change the goalposts post-event, and I have to say, we have to be fair to the candidate. The candidate has applied using the systems that we said and is now at the point, I think that actually it would be in order to take the vote.
Phil, please, I'll come to you, Mo.
All right, Anouska's sitting there next to Stephen. I see no reason why if any councillors wish to ask her what she wishes to do for our wonderful town, now is an opportunity.
Good question. Mo, please.
I still feel that we're being asked to vote. I mean, when I was co-opted on, we had to write a letter, and I think Anouska's done that, but we had to write a letter and we had to give a presentation. So at least the councillors could see us and talk to us. And I don't think we're being fair to the candidate without letting her have that opportunity.
Well, you can ask her now, Mo, if you wish to ask her a question, Mo, if you want to. She's no different in being in a council meeting. Would you like to ask her something? Because that's what Phil said. I mean, you know, you're welcome to ask her a question.
But I've got no background to her. I have no background to her.
That's fine.
It's very difficult to ask a question.
Okay, that's fine. Who else have I got? Martin. Martin, I'm just finding you on the, and I'm going to ask Sheila and then we've got to propose a second. I'll go to the vote. Sheila and Martin. Martin first, please. Martin, can I hear you? Martin? Yeah, sorry, just about, Martin. A bit faint in there.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
That's better.
The last official publication in Viaduct said, and this is the July issue of Viaduct, the council will consider co-option, further details to follow when available. There could be, I know of two or three people who've said, oh, what's all this about? We might like to consider co-option, but they haven't had any details. And it's all very well saying, well, it's on the website, but not everybody reads the council website. So I think we can't co-opt without inviting the whole town to put their names forward if they wish to be co-opted.
Yeah, well, the thing is, it has been advertised on our website and our Facebook page, so I'm just saying that the government act is
Good enough, Dean, that is not good enough.
Well, I'm afraid, I'm sorry, whether it's good enough or not is actually a standard, is actually on our parish, it's a government act nineteen seventy-two. Well, it's
We've lost you, Dean.
Sheila, we're froze. We're froze.
No, you're okay now.
You're okay now.
Can I ask you to go off? Yeah, you're not there. Can I ask you to go off video for a minute? Yeah. Okay, Phil, please. That's the last question I'm going to
Right, okay, just again, very briefly, I just want to counter Martin's argument. I put it on my STC Facebook page and also my website, and the Facebook page had a thousand views. Okay? And knew there was the opportunity for someone to stand for the town council, and a thousand people viewed it.
Can I ask how many people view our Facebook page as well, please? How many? I have no idea. How many people view our Facebook page? How many views have we got on that? Okay, fine. Okay, I think we're going to have to do it. Go on, sorry.
Can I have? Can I have my say, please? I have my hand up for a while.
Sorry, we froze Sheila. Sorry, we all froze.
Right, so just two things. Right, two things, now make them quick. Firstly, I think the idea of proposing before we've had a conversation is wrong, because it means that the proposal is there before, say, we've had any conversation about it. And the other thing is, going back to what Tim said, Tim said that yes, the policy may be wrong, but we have to defer to what we believe to be right. That being the case, we have a perfectly good process in place that was agreed in tag two weeks ago. Why is there the need to change it? And also, why are we rushing this through? What is the need to do this so quickly? If Mrs Harrison is going to be a good councillor, and as I say, I've got no grounds to think that she won't, why can't the co-option be done in the correct way in September? Why is there the rush?
Tim, can I have you, please? You want us to put your hands up?
We've got a material change in development. We've had two separate resignations since then. I have to say that we may be looking at a second wave. There were only a few councillors actually with feet on their ground when we had the first wave. To have another young, able-bodied councillor, in case anything went wrong, I think is an absolute insanity to turn that down at this moment in time. Yeah, so, yeah, that's my opinion on it.
Well, I've heard what you've all had to say. Unfortunately, Sheila, we have a proposal in second there. I suspect we're going to have to go to a name vote, because I'm not going to pick you all up with hands, I do not think. So we've got a proposal in second to accept Anouska Harrison on the council. So I shall go, I'm not going to go alphabetical, because I haven't got alphabetical. So I'm going to do it the way I've got it written down here. So Sue Piffer, yes or no? For or against?
What, we are muting and saying something? I just have to say, nothing against Mrs Harrison, please. It's just I don't think it's right, so I'm voting against.
Against? Yep. Sheila?
Against.
Martin?
Against.
Tim?
For.
Phil?
Four.
Steve Harrison? Steve? No.
Yeah, four.
Mo Fletcher?
Against. Not against the lady, but against the process, so against.
Peter Simmons? Peter, you need to mute, please, Peter.
He said four, but you need to unmute him.
Four.
Fiona Richardson?
Four.
Right, and I'm going to go for. So we've got one, two, three, four against. Six, four. So Anouska, you are co-opted on to council. I have to give you some really bad news, though. You have to fill some forms out. We cannot do that tonight on Zoom. So could you, yeah, please Jude, thank you.
Sorry, Dean, can the members take a vote on that, so that it's okay not to sign it this evening, please?
Yeah, so is it okay for you to? So, sorry Jude, you'll have to explain to me what you want, sorry.
I just need you to put a proposal forward that it's okay by the members for Mrs Harrison to sign her acceptance of office at a later date.
So, please, is it acceptable for you that she signs? Phil, please?
Yeah, I'll propose that she signs it within a week.
Peter Simmons?
I'll second that.
Okay, so I've got seconds everywhere. So, okay, Tim, I'll take your second. And are we all for that? So, okay. Okay, fine. Okay, that's fine. Okay, that's fine. That's done. Okay, that's painful, but that's done. Okay, now, we're going to go now to a policy. I would imagine, we're going to go over to the policy. I propose we defer this policy for it to go to, I think it should go to P and C actually, to be reviewed. That's just what I'm saying. But Jude, perhaps you'll come in and tell me otherwise.
Now, I welcome any support to get a suitable policy drafted. And P and C will meet next week.
Yeah.
So we can do some variations to take to the committee to edit and have it drafted ready for full council in September.
Is Sue happy with that? Sue and Sheila, P and C happy for that? Or are you happy with that, Sue? Sheila?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, happy to come to you or not?
Right, it has to go somewhere, because I think we've just made complete fools of ourselves. So yeah, put it to P and C and we'll see what we come up with.
Great, thank you. That's great. Thank you very much. Okay, that's fine. Right, I'm going to go over to going to go over to now grant application Kirkham Street, Phil, trust. Who wants to kick this off, please? Hang on. Who would like to kick this off? Well, I, I'll kick it off then. I think it's a great, a great thing. As when Margaret came to speak to me before, I can't remember how long ago Margaret was. Was it twelve months ago, Mo, Margaret? And I sent her on a mission to, she, she said she would do really well and come up with it. She's done, she's done marvellously well. I think there is a fair bit of support for it. However, we have to be mindful that we are, we are in COVID-19. It's, we are, our finances will be stretched, I believe, this year. We've got any, very, very little income from, well, no income from Edgar Hall, actually, at the moment. However, the recommendation is, is to support for twenty-five thousand pounds. I think if we go over twenty-five thousand pounds, I would like to say that we go for consultation to the public. I think we just, I think to be fair, being from the district council, if a, if a grant came in for twenty-five thousand pounds from a parish council, town council, I think they'd look at it and say, wow, that's good sum of money. And I think you will get support with that. So I, I would go with the recommendation, but I want to hear from other people. So hang on, if I've got anybody else here, I'll keep taking you. You seem to be in the middle of my screens. Or anybody else would like to speak? Martin, please.
Yeah, I, yeah, twenty-five thousand seems a good sum to me. So I'll go with that. I propose that we offer them twenty-five thousand on the terms that we've agreed.
Yeah, the, the, the new bit that Margaret wanted with the, whatever she said to us.
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
Okay, okay. Anybody else? Phil, Phil, Peter Simmons first, Phil. Can I go to Peter Simmons? Because he, Peter, unmute, please, Pete? Thank you.
Yes, I would like to support the grant application and in the sum of money of twenty-five thousand pounds that you have discussed.
Are you seconding that, Peter?
I'm seconded that.
Okay, Phil, please.
Just that I would ask and wish Margaret, if we give you two hundred, sorry, twenty-five thousand pounds, you actually spend that, two hundred and fifty is a nice number, I know. Two, twenty-five thousand pounds, potentially you put that to looking at the archaeology. I've got such a gut feeling, there's something really important under there.
No, Phil, that's not for this. This is, but this is for, to help them to acquire grants and to actually, to, for the, for the access, the purchase of the site, subject to them doing a deal with Somerset County Council. No, sorry. No. No, you're muted, sorry.
Yeah. When we were starting out, I did actually contact the Somerset Heritage Group about any possible archaeological things there. And they said that they thought there was, it was, it had been investigated in the past, and they felt that there was very little likelihood that there would be anything of great significance. Right? So I had actually contacted the Somerset Heritage Group, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, thank you, Mo. Thank you very much. So I've got a proposal in a second that we support. Oh, sorry, Jude. Sorry, Jude, carry on.
Sorry to interrupt. Can I just clarify what the new proposal is? Just for the wording, please?
Margaret, can you, can you just confirm the wording?
Can I say what I believe it is?
Okay, of course.
To support the grant request to the value of twenty-five thousand pounds and to release the funds from the Capital Projects earmarked fund. Now, the Capital Projects earmarked fund holds the ex-entire sale proceeds, with the caveat now to release the funds on request once the sale agreement has been secured with Somerset County Council and presented to STC for verification.
Yeah, that's fine. That sounds very good. Margaret's nodding her head, so I think that's acceptable to her. So. Sorry, yes. No, I know, but you're nodding your head, Margaret. So obviously Jude's got it right. So, okay. So who proposed again? Sorry, Martin did, seconded Peter. And are we all in favour of that, please? No? Oh, yeah, you got an interest, Mo. So hang on. We all got hands up? Sheila, Sue? Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's fine. Unanimous. Well done, Margaret. Well done. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
The next request is Somerton Recreation Ground Trust. Does anybody wish to speak on this, please? No. Okay, so are we happy, are we happy to get them the grant? Yes, have I got a proposer as we accept the grant? Phil?
I'll propose that we give them the grant as specified.
Okay, any, any, sorry, second? Who wants a second? Is that Martin?
Tim.
Oh, Tim. Yeah, okay, Tim. And are we all in favour of that, please? Yeah, yeah, fine. That's unanimous. Thank you. Your show now, Jude. Actions and reports covered elsewhere on the agenda. Sorry, we take too long to get to you.
No, no, that's fine. Thank you. Just want to let you know that the skate park half-pipe is, half-pipe, sorry, has been installed and the post-installation inspection completed. I took receipt of the Edgar Hall new curtains, so they're held here. Manhole and sign repair took place at Brunel Car Park. Also, within Cox's Yard Car Park, a bench and sign have been removed. The bench is to be relocated. And thanks to Fiona and Dean and their hard work, Somerton High Street has had their COVID-19 social distance awareness signs installed. So thank you both for your efforts.
Well, thanks for getting them, Jude. Well done. And Correspondence and Clerk's report, please.
Okay, I just thought it was worthwhile doing a bit of an exercise to look at where we are in terms of our COVID-19 expenditure. Mostly, the expenditure has took place to fund or help support, I should say, the community lifeline efforts. And also to look at putting in some provisions at our play areas and skate park for hand sanitizer stations. I've got a detailed spreadsheet report analysis, which I will include in the minutes, but the total of that has come in at one thousand seven hundred and fifty-five pounds and forty-eight pence.
Okay.
And just to give you a rough overview of some of the work that's took place, as previously mentioned, the half-pipe was installed at the skate park. I spoke to the contractor who's looking after the Edgar Hall refurbishment, and still that's planned to be on schedule. There is some concerns about procurement of the materials due to production lines and people closing down their businesses, but we hope it will remain on track for us. We undertook a small repair to the cemetery tap. There was a broken stamp pipe there, and that's been repaired. Access and highways, I can't thank the efforts of Fiona or Sue Piffler in the help to combat the fly tipping issues, litter and dog fouling in Somerton. So thank you very much for undertaking that work. Again, as previously mentioned, a repair was made for a sunken manhole cover within the Brunel Car Park. Promotions and communication, they, as a committee, have been really proactive with their social media plans. So we look forward to that coming to the next full council meeting. Due to the pandemic, unfortunately, the annual parish meeting was, well, cancelled. So at the next P and C meeting, we will look at the process to take forward for the community awards that normally takes place there. Somerton News was published in Dispatch, so thank you to Martin and Mo for your efforts there. And for all our residents or local businesses, I should say, that chose to advertise there. We have taken down the main Somerton Town Council notice board on the gable end of the LSMI. And we're currently using the tourism board. It's very much smaller, so forgive the, the briefer notices to combat the need for space there, with the hope that the electronic notice boards will soon be installed. And, and that's it, really. So thank you very much.
Well done, Jude. Well done. Internal audit report to be noted. We do not need to vote on that. And then we move on to the AGAR report, the annual governance statement. You've got, have you all, you've all had the annual governance statement, have you? If you've got it with you? I'm not going to read it all. I'm just going to go for each question. So, well, I will read it all, but I might as well do individually. But I'm going to take it on block, okay? Number one, we have put in place arrangements for effective financial management during the year and for the preparation of accountable statements. That's, so you're happy to say yes to that one? Okay, I don't need to, we'll do it block in a minute. If anybody says no, just joke to me. We maintain an adequate system of internal control, including measures designed to prevent and detect fraud and corruption, and reviewed its effectiveness. Three, we, we took all respect, responsible, responsible steps to ensure ourselves that we are no matter or actual or potential non-compliance with laws, regulations and proper practices, and that we could have, we could have significant financial effects or liabilities of this authority to conduct its business or manage its finance. So it's yes to that as well, because I believe we've done that. We provided proper opportunities during the year for the exercise of electors' rights in accordance with the requirement of the accounts and audit regulations. Now, we've had to put no to that. Now, Jude, do you want to explain why we've had to put no to that one? Are you happy? Sorry, Jude, you're on mute.
Sorry, get carried away here. Rosie's explanation, if you don't mind reading it out, Dean, explains that quite nicely.
Yeah. In order to test the compliance with the council's requirements for the exercise of public rights, I've checked the, I've checked the council's calculation of its public rights period and checked the council's website during the statutory public right period to confirm that the required item had been published. I can confirm that the council correctly calculated the period and that the annual governance accountability return AGAR had been put up on the council's website, but the scanned information was incomplete as it did not include S1 and S2 of the AGAR. I raised this with the clerk and the AGAR was re-scanned and republished. I can confirm, as of the eighth of the seventh, two thousand and nineteen, the correct information was published on the council's website. As a result, I have accessed this and tested as, as a fail. Note that the external auditors subsequently confirmed that in order to pass this test, a council must be able to demonstrate via its website, audit, an audit trail, that all required information was uploaded on the day before the public rights period commenced, and that the information remained on the website for the duration of the period. Had the council's information been presented, present, present on the website, when I tested it, I would have had, I would have to have assessed the test is not covered. So that's the only reason we've had to put no. It's not, it is, it is there, but it's a, it's a very minor thing. Okay, so we've had to say no, I'm afraid to it. Five, we carried out an assessment of the risk facing this authority and took appropriate steps to manage those risks, including the introduction of internal controls and/or external insurance covers where required. And we've taken yes to that. We've maintained throughout the year an adequate and effective system of internal audit of the accounts, records and control systems. We've taken yes to that. We took appropriate action on all matters raised in report from internal and external audit. We've taken yes to that. We considered whether any litigation, liabilities or commitments, events or transactions occurring either during or after the year end have had a financial impact on this authority and they're appropriate, where appropriate. I've included them in the account statements. We've taken yes to that. And the last one is trust we put not available. Are you happy? Is there any questions on that AGAR report, please? Okay, are you happy that we, we can have a proposer? Do we accept that report? Fiona? Are you proposing, Fiona? Or are you just sticking your hand up? You're on mute, Fiona. Yeah. Okay, I can't, I can't let rude. Second, Mo. And are, are we all in favour of that report, please? Thank you. I'd like to thank Jude for, there's an awful lot of work doing this report. And I'd like to thank you very much for all our hard work doing this. It's, it's, it is significant. It's one of the biggest things clerks have to do at the end of the year. It's very stressful. Thank you very much, Jude. Really appreciate that. Annual return, annual returns. Do you want me to vote on this one as well, Jude? The annual return? Okay, the annual returns. You've seen the annual return two thousand and nineteen, twenty. Are you happy with that?
Yes.
Can I have a proposer? Mo, do you want to propose that? Sorry, I can only see. Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I have a seconder?
I'll second.
Okay, I've got Sheila. I'm going to take, I'm going to take Sheila, actually. Sorry, Sheila, you're on the second sheet. I can't see you very well. I've had to, I had to scroll my screen. I did say earlier in the meeting, I've only got nine pictures. So I'm, you'll have to shout at me. Okay. And can I have a vote on all that, please? Are you all in favour? Okay, I'm going to scroll the screen. Yeah. Okay, great. Got that. Thank you very much. That's fine. Somerton Town Council's asset register, this is to note, you can see that in front of you. We do not need to vote on that. Are you happy with that? Yeah. Good, good. Okay, we have to vote on the next bit. As you know, we need a new chair of P and C, and Sue has come forward. And, sorry, Fiona?
I asked, I put my hand up with reference to the question before.
Oh, okay, the asset register?
No, it was referenced, financial papers that have come out. We don't seem to have asked, we don't seem to have them on the agenda anymore.
No, this is, this is the annual return, Fiona.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt. Fiona, the annual count is, is the statement of, our statement of financial papers.
Yeah.
So then that feeds into the AGAR governance that's a part of the AGAR, the figures?
Can I ask a question to Jude?
Yeah, Chris, go.
Yeah. On the financial papers, we're referencing, okay, it was May, but it was a two hundred and twenty pound.
No, that's not what we're talking about. Yeah, sorry. That's what I said, Jude. No, we haven't got there. We haven't got there. We haven't got this. We're doing the annual return. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, okay. So asset register, you're happy with the asset register? Fine, thank you. Obviously, election of, we've, obviously, when, when we lost Laura, we needed a P and C chairman, and Sue's come forward. She wants to be, I have no problem with that. I don't think any of us do. And then underneath, we've got structures, committee structures. We've got Vince Holland wishes to go on L and P. I believe Mo, who's here, wants to go on P and C, and Mo on planning. Have I got this right?
Yes.
Yes, fine. Sue, are you, Sue, are you there? Are you happy to, Sue, are you happy to take chair of P and C?
Yes.
I have to, I have to ask you. You might, you might say no.
No, very happy. Thank you.
Okay, bad luck. Okay, so are, are we all happy with those posts? Sorry, Jude.
Can we, can we vote on them, please, Dean?
Yeah, I'm going to, but I want to see if they're all happy. Sorry. I just want to make sure everybody's happy, that they're happy with the vote. Sorry, Peter. Peter, come in first, Phil, and I'll come back to you, Peter. Sorry. No, no. Okay, Phil, please.
Mine was just a vote, yeah.
Okay, so can I, can I, so you're proposing that? Proposing that, or are you?
I'll propose, Chair.
Can I have a different seconder for a change? Can I have Sheila? Would you like the second, Sheila? Sorry, I've managed to scroll the screen now. And are we all in favour of that, please? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. To approve the objectives for Somerton Town Council. Have you, you've all read this. Are you happy with the objectives of Somerton Town Council for two thousand and twenty, twenty-one? Yeah, you're all happy with them?
We, we did say, didn't we, that the local council gold award level we might put back?
Yeah. Because, yeah, should we leave it on there any rate, just in case? We don't have to achieve this, Jude, do we? It's something that we, it's just something we desire to do. Sorry, Jude. Yeah, come on in, Jude.
Yeah, exactly. It's just an aspirational thing to go for. We've worked hard to go from.
Yeah.
The quality levels. So I think it's a good thing for the council to seek to achieve. But yeah, you're quite right. You can do it as you feel fit, really.
Yeah. So at least if we've got it on there, Mo, and we can do it, we can do it if we, you know. Are you happy with that, Mo?
Yes.
Okay. So can I have a proposer to accept this, please? Someone new? Martin, you happy to propose this, Martin? Second? Sheila, you happy to second again, Sheila? I'm scrolling the screen now, sorry. And are we all in favour? Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we move on to Behind Perry Traffic Improvement Scheme. I'm sure Peter, Peter Simmons might have something to say about this. Would you like to speak on this, Peter? Because I know you, you're into this. Do you want to?
Yes, not only am I into it, but I have to pass by it every time I want to go into town. I don't have to, but it is a good route into town, and it is very, it's an archaic reminder of how Somerton Town has grown up haphazardly over the decades. In summary, I think option four is right, and it gives us everything we need. Sensible wide carriageway and a safe wide footway as well. And one stone, it'll be there for the rest of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Fiona, please.
As the councillors have been on the council for quite a long time, they will well know that the view site coming out of the end of Behind Berry onto the large area that goes around, the swooping curve that comes round, has been a bad junction due to the fact of people's hedges on the right, on the right-hand side. So I think anything that's done on that area will be a benefit. due to the fact of people's hedges on the right, on the right hand side, so I think anything that's done on that area will be a benefit.
Okay, is there anybody else wishes to speak on, on this? No, uh, can I, Peter, would you propose that as you spoke on it Peter, would you be happy to propose that? Fiona, are you happy to second that? And can we have a vote on that, please, that we? Thank you, hang on. Yeah, you, Martin, you in favour of that Martin?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay, fine, that's okay, it's unanimous. This obviously will go to county highways, um, to say that we are happy with that scheme and it is a county highway scheme. It's actually an officer-led scheme, so um we like to thank Gary Warren for that, I think it was very good. Okay, um, meeting schedule. Um, you've got in front of you the meeting schedule, um, are you happy, oh hang on, the review, yeah, statement of meeting, are you happy with the meeting schedules?
Yes.
Okay, um, right, can I have a vote on that, can I have a proposer? Sorry Sue, Sue first, Sue, sorry, thank you.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to explain to anyone who, who was wondering about the P and C. Uh, we, we just seem to have had, moved to once every three months and the committee is very strongly feeling that um, we need to uh fall in line with the other committees because we're going to have a lot of work on to meet every two months, so that's all that is, is, is coming in line.
Yeah, what I've seen is that you've got an awful lot of work on Sue. Mo, please, and I'll come back to you Fiona in a minute, Mo. Muted Mo, please. Unmute Mo, sorry.
Um, certainly with the um neighbourhood plan, there'll be tremendous amount of work, wouldn't there?
Yeah, there will. It is something we could, I mean, if you've got an awful lot on the P and C committee, it's something we can delay for, for a little bit of time. If you, you know, don't snow yourself under with it, you know, you pick your priorities, but that's up to your committee, what you decide to do, that's the nice thing about having committees, I think.
Can I just say, sorry, was, um, was that going to be planning or P and C, the neighbourhood plan?
Oh, it was going to be planning actually, wasn't it?
Planning, wasn't it, yeah.
Well joint, I think, I think you were going to work together, Jude, Jude.
Um, sorry, so um the way the budget worked is that P and C will look after the budget. The planning committee will sort of look at all the, the governance, now that doesn't mean that any member of the council can't be part of that, but they were going to steer that along and, and sort of go out for community involvement and create the, the community um, spirit towards the neighbourhood plan project. And then P and C would sort of take on the role of hosting events and marketing and that type of thing, so it's very much a collaboration of the two committees.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, uh Fiona, please.
I realise we haven't got a full council meeting in August and the one on August the twenty fifth is the annual, is everybody all right with that?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, yeah.
That's fine, um, you're, you're having yours in August, you'll have, if there's any planning, you'll have planning there before your meeting as well.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm very lucky that.
Possibly.
Day after I come back off my holiday, so I'm.
Okay.
I'm just, just clarifying as everybody else.
Well, you'd have to do a bit, you'd have to do a bit of studying while you're on holiday, won't you? Okay. Okay, so, so can I have a proposer to accept the uh schedule, please? Who would like, Sue, and seconded by Peter, and are we all in favour of that, please? Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, finance in front of you, so schedule of payments, are there any, I know Fiona, you wanted to speak in a minute about this, so is there any questions on this, please? Oh Sheila, please first.
Um, can I just ask you to confirm what's happening with regards to furlough? Are the, are the three, um, the three ancillary workers and Claire, are they being furloughed? And do we know that we will receive the um, the eighty percent from the government?
Um, thanks Sheila, yeah, our Echo Hall staff are furloughed, um, and we claim back eighty percent. Um, it was a decision of the um Chair, Vice Chair and myself that we would top up their salary by twenty percent so that they have not gone without any pay. Um, so there's been no reductions to their salaries. And yes, we are getting payments, they're paid monthly, um, so once I run the payroll, we put in a claim for the furlough payments to be received back with HMRC.
Lovely, thank you.
Okay, Fiona, I think you want to ask a question about something.
Right, it was just one thing Jude, uh, on the maze of financial accounts, we put down that it was a a little clear and rubbish collection of playparks of two hundred and twenty five pound. Now, playparks, this is confusing because they're all closed.
It's not so much they're all closed, they still have their, their maintenance going on. Um, predominantly that payment, if you wish to come into the office and I can show you the invoices, which I'd rather than discuss a, a contractor, is largely to do with the Gassen's Lane area. Um, and as you know, the playpark obviously was closed, you're quite right, but it's a big open space and the skate park was open. Um, and as much as we took provisions to, to close the area safely and put notices up, people were in effect still using that area at their own risk.
Okay Jude, you're just confused with it saying that, I'm thinking it was, they're closed, yeah, I can see where you come from.
Yeah, thank you.
Phil, please.
I'll be very brief, this will be payment schedule, uh Jude, on the thirty first of March twenty twenty. Uh, write down on the first page, we have two payments that appear to be exactly the same on the same date, twentieth, the third, third, twenty twenty. Um, their code is B four one six, virgin hedge cut, thirty six pounds twice. Maybe two payments, but it looks to be a duplicate payment. Of fifty pounds forty.
So I can highlight them on, on my document, can you give me the reference again, please, I've got four financial reports here.
I know you have, thirty first March twenty twenty, first page, that will be the date of twentieth, third, twenty twenty. Weeks is the reference, okay, account, and it's B, if I can read it, B four one six, okay? And it is twenty two, thirty five, verge and hedge cut, and it is fifty pounds forty as a two liner, two payment. They may be doubled, I'm not sure.
Um, sorry Phil, no, they're not doubled, when you refer to twenty two and thirty five, um, they're different department codes, so verge work in different departments.
You're happy, are you all happy now? Thank you, um, so you're happy to approve the payments for?
Dean, Sheila would like, Dean, Sheila would like to speak, sorry.
Sorry Sheila, sorry.
Right, sorry Dean, um, it's not to do with payment schedules as such, but with, uh, with Brian Dobson having resigned, we need another councillor to help go through the finances. So I wonder if we have, um, if we have a volunteer, please?
It, any, have we got any volunteers? Okay, if you're, sorry, so you're happy Sue, okay, yeah, if, if you're in trouble, just let me know and I'll come and help you. Okay, so you, you're happy to sign off the, the payments for March, April and May and June, please? Can I have a vote on that, please? Proposer Phil, second Sheila, is that you seconding Sheila? And are we all in favour? Thank you very much, and we've got two councillors any rate, so you're happy, happy with that. Uh, you've all seen the bank reconciliation, are you, are you happy with that? And you've all seen the monthly budgets and you're happy with that, fine, okay. Um, I'm going to go into now one, one, four, nine, eight, planning applications. I won't be voting on this, even though I have dispensation from the district council and so is Tim, so I'll leave it up to other, but we can go through it. It's twenty stroke zero one eight one eight REM, it's a reserve matters application at uh Drayton Court, that is, if anybody don't know where that is, is Bankham Road, is in the back of Bankham Road. You've got the big houses, of course, Bankham Road is in the back of there, the new ones that Mr Campbell, well, they've been, they've been sold off now, Mr Campbell got permission. Have we, we have got some planning people here, Martin, would you like to say something? Because you are, I know you're XO, but you have been on the planning committee and you would have looked at this.
Um, I have no comments, it's fine.
So you're happy with it?
Yep, yep.
Fiona, are you happy with it?
There's only one situation I don't like and it just says, they outline planning application for the erection of four bungalows and an access road. They've got to, got to change that because the footprint of those plots you cut is not big for a bungalow.
But I will interfere slightly, but I'm not going to vote on it. They are outlined, already been approved, this is for a reserve matters application, this is only design. So the planning permission has been approved for those sites and we're purely, yeah, that's fine. But are you happy with otherwise? Yeah, uh, Phil, did you want to say something?
Only in, in as much as, do you wish to have a proposal that both applications be passed?
I would do one at a time, if that's okay. I think we've got to do one at a time, so, so Martin, have you got any comments on the application, are you happy with it, totally?
Happy, totally happy.
So you're happy to propose that that is approved, that we, we're approved, yeah, seconded. Fiona, I think you're on the planning committee, I'd like you to have seconder, and all the, anybody else, all in favour? Yeah, okay, unanimous on that, thank you very much. Second application, twenty stroke zero one eight oh three, again, reserve matters application. It's plot two, again, it's already had outline planning permission approved. Um, again, same, have you, have you got any comments on that Martin?
No, looks absolutely fine.
Thank you, and Fiona?
I've been round and had a look at the plots, um, there was, there was a, do you think? I don't believe the neighbours at the back have complained about any, anything about the the site, the, the actually building on, whether they, whether the elevation's going to be too big or anything, I don't think there's going to be a complaint at the front, so I think it's fine.
Okay, thanks, so Fiona, would you propose that, we have, yeah, seconded, Martin, would you like to do that one, since you're ex planning committee, and are we all in favour? Thank you very much, so they're both, we're happy with those Jude.
Can I just register abstentions for both of those?
Yeah, 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 and me, sorry. Fine, okay, thank you very much. Um, I'm going to move on now to Chairman's report, um, I'd just like to, we have had two resignations of councillors, Brian Dobson and Cliff Bassett, I'd just like to, I have written to them, um, I haven't informed all of you um, about it, but I was, I knew we had a council meeting tonight and I'd rather do it in open session. I'd just like to thank Brian and Cliff, um, for all their hard work that they've done on this council. And they will be missed, um, for their valid contributions to this council and, um, so yes, I would like to thank them. I, I wish Brian Dobson, who is not, who has been unwell, I wish him a speedy recovery, I did give him a get well whip round and give him the get, get, get royal card. Um, and so yes, thank you very much, is there, is there any other comments that anybody else would like to wish them the very best? Martin, would you like to say, because you were very close to them both, I've been on Arts Festival together?
I've not seen, I saw Brian or spoke to Brian about three days ago and he's fine.
Good, he's getting better, is he?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good, that's very good news, so that's that. Um, items for the next meeting, if there's anybody got any items next meeting, just let Jude, Jude know, okay? Um, I, I'm going to call this meeting to a close and we're going to go in camera now, so please, uh, everybody that's not on the council, please, would you?